Fifty percent of the maximum would be twenty-two people. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three people are in the room at the moment. We're allowed twenty-two.
Twenty-two total or twenty-two?
Twenty-two total. The whole room, the whole room. Maximum in the room is forty-four. The state says fifty percent. So that would be twenty-two.
So we can-
You can set out, you can open the door.
Alright.
Which will be appreciated by everybody in the room. Because when you push back and it should lock open. Is it here? We're not there.
That's right.
Checking in with you guys, can you hear me?
What about Engineer and Schuster? Wait, checking in? Oh yeah, he should be online. What about Kelly?
You guys hear me? Hear me? Hey Steve?
Hey Ed, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear all of you, see all of you.
No.
Can't see me?
No Ed, we can't see you.
You're imaginary, yeah.
We can hear you.
You can hear me. Can you see me?
See your name.
I don't-
Oh, there you are.
Okay.
Hey Ed, there's money in the floor if you turn off that camera.
He's kind of so locked down, you cannot even change the date or the location.
Five by five. There's a lot of, everybody's talking, it's always hard to pick you up, but yeah, I got you there.
Yeah, seven forty-five, mine says seven thirty-two, seven thirty-three.
Mine says seven thirty-three.
What does yours say, George? The time when you-
Seven thirty-four.
Mine's seven thirty-four.
Mine's seven thirty-three.
My four hundred and twenty-five and it matches my watch.
I've got the same here. His says seven forty-five, yours says seven forty-five. The rest of us are seven thirty-three.
That must be it.
All she has to do work is try carbon copy. There's no digital copies. Yeah, I know. Somebody's complaining. I have, she had some notes. Inspector Jones, she saw something.
Four years ago.
Oh, just as she used.
Okie dokie.
Well, see Joe, I see Ed. Oh, Mr. Schuster.
We could all change our names to avoid confusion.
It's gonna be a long discussion.
It does require us to mentally communicate, that's why.
We practicing for how long?
That sounded sinister.
Alright, we have got seven thirty. Let's call the meeting board, Plenar Delegates. Mr. Natalie?
Here.
Mr. Prano?
Here.
Mr. Harney?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Thorne?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Nimmick?
Here.
For Mr. President. Alright, thank you sir. Uh, Minutes, we have a motion to approve the minutes of September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one.
So move Diatley?
Seconded.
Moved by Diatley, seconded by Hoffman to approve the minutes of September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections to the minutes, roll call please. Mr. Hoffman?
Hi.
Mr. Diatley?
Hi.
Mr. Prano?
Hi.
Mr. Harney?
Here.
Mr. Thorne?
Hi.
Mr. Nimmick?
Hi.
Okay, we've got six affirmative votes, no negative votes. The minutes of September twentieth are still approved. Excuse me a second, I want to do a quick head count. One, two, three, four, five, six, nine, ten, eleven. We've got twenty-five people in the room. We're open law, we have twenty-two under the gubernatorial mandate, fifty percent occupancy of the building. Okay, the President's report, according to the gubernatorial disaster proclamation by the governor, we are allowed to continue remote attendance of our meetings, which has modified the Open Meetings Act, allowing remote and in-person attendance. So this evening, attending remotely, we have trustee Harney and trustee Nimmick. Attending in person, we have trustee Prano, trustee Diatley, trustees Thorne and Hoffman, along with myself. Also attending this evening is Director of Public Works, Kyle Killinger, George Clark, Anthony Mills, the Finance Director, Eugene Van, Chief of Police, Sam Parma. So we've got that covered. We will go with the gubernatorial disaster requirements, that all votes will be roll call. There will be no vote, votes, voice votes tonight, strictly roll call. Okay. Let's skip for the, oh, one last thing before I move on. Saturday, October second, Northern Kane County Chamber of Chamber of Commerce awarded the Community Service Award for twenty-twenty-one to John Lawrence, who voices exceptional work as our AV guy. The next GAC, John, in the open convertible on December fourth, going down seventy-two. Rain or shine or snow. Thank you, John. We really appreciate you coming through. Okay, that's it for the President's report. Report, please. No reports tonight. Thank you, Tony. Planning and zoning, there is no report. Attorney, Mr. Schuster.
Good evening, everyone. I bet on the other, I'm unmuted. I wanted to give you a brief update on the Windsor Drive situation. We solicited appraisals and have a fee quote of two thousand dollars to obtain that appraisal. At, at some point, I guess at this point, we should have a chicken and egg discussion. It might be advisable to open a discussion with the neighboring owners who would be affected by vacating this right-of-way and, and would have an opportunity to acquire it pro rata, based on their frontage. We have not had that discussion, to my knowledge, and you may wish to determine that there is some willingness of some or all of them to participate in a purchase agreement with the village, once you determine a price.
No problem, I can give them the jingle. Only one, one property is aware of it, and I believe that is how it came to our attention.
There was a setback issue for some planned improvement, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so before before committing to expending the money for the appraisal, you may wish to seek out, determine if anyone's interested in making a transaction with the village to acquire all or a part of this property. Any other comments about that?
Everybody seems to be in consensus with you on that one.
Okay, I'll notify the appraiser then that he's on hold for another two weeks and we'll follow up with the property owners and see where things stand.
Alright.
Okay.
George Clark will put this on the agenda for a follow-up on the eighteenth. Okay.
That's, that's all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Hey Mark, I do have one quick question for you, if I may?
Sure.
And the other board members may not know about this and maybe some history, but the village, well, I don't know, I guess three, four years ago, sold the land south of the village hall, north of Wetlam Mitigation Bank, along with the mitigation bank, to the township open space, idea that they were going to maintain it. As part of that, there was a water line that goes through there that we were unable to locate. The recommendation of Jeff Steele, he recommended that we place an easement on all the property. We sold the township that was not in the Wetlam Mitigation Bank. So maybe, if you're able to speak to it now, Mark, or at the next meeting, about what was put in the the sale that protects our ability to get to that water main and what we may want to do in the future as far as adding an easement to those properties and what the cost would be, if you could just fill in the board really quick.
Sure, the deed to the township reserved the right in the village to access and maintain the existing water line wherever precisely it may be. Mr. Steele could, probably not tonight, but at your request, provide some estimate of cost of what it would take to actually locate that line and then draw up a plat of easement and record it. I'm not sure what it would take to actually find that line and see exactly as best you can where it runs. It's at the wester, westerly end of all of that land, kind of just, I'm sorry, southerly. Just southerly of the village hall and at the northerly end of all that land, excuse me. So we could put that together if you feel a need to be more precise about this line and where it is and that easement.
And as I remember, just, you know, they did try to find it, it's plastic, and to the best of anybody's ability, they feel that either the metal marking line was either not installed with it or is corroded away. And Jeff had also recommended that we have access because of the, the way the property is and the way the creek runs, so that we have access through all that property, the water line. So with that in mind, are we done as long, that we've reserved the ability to get to that water main with the deed, what was put on the deed?
I, yes, I believe so.
Okay, so.
All questions, your job.
Are, are you good with that, Jeff? Is that, does that protect us?
Like you had mentioned, is, I think it was Kyle or maybe it was Art, in the past, they'd actually tried to find that pipe, but it obviously is plastic and like you said, is either the tracing wire is either not there or corroded away and they're unable to actually locate it. So actually trying to locate it might be actually pretty difficult unless you just started digging a bunch of test holes in order to try and find it.
So I guess unless anybody on the board feels otherwise, we're just gonna leave that matter to rest and we're, we're good with that. Does that, anybody have any objections to that?
No.
Oh, another thing to scratch off my-
Break after.
Another thing to scratch off my to-do list, that's just great. Thank you, that's all I had. Thank you, thank you for the time.
Sure thing. Okay, Joe, thanks a lot. Nothing else, Mr. Schuster?
No, nothing else, Mr. President.
Alright, the next item is the Engineers' report. Mr. Steele?
Good evening, just have two updates. The first being Sleepy Hollow Road. You can see that we are all paved. Pavement markings are on the road and the shoulder stone has actually been completed as of this morning. So really, the only remaining items is just to find a walkthrough, just to see if there's any items. I know that there's a couple items that we have to take care of, so hopefully by the end of this week is the project will be completed, but you shouldn't see any major work on Sleepy Hollow Road anymore, so. And then after that is all the signs will be taken down and we can close out the project. Any questions in regards to that? Secondly, then, is the Second Street Program, which is just basically Carroll Crest or Carroll Court. And a couple of the cul-de-sacs is, we got the signed contracts approval back from IDOT, which means that we can set up a pre-construction meeting and start the project. I've talked to Schroder Asphalt and they would like to either do it this Thursday or Friday, at least as far as a pre-construction meeting, so by the end of this week, I should know when they're planning on starting. Other than that, any other questions?
We have no questions here, Jeff. Thank you. Move on to the next item. Warrants, Director of Finance, Eugene?
We have warrants in a total of one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents, for the request of motion to pay those bills.
So who?
Second, Prano.
Moved by Thorne, seconded by Prano to approve the warrants on October fourth, two thousand twenty-one, in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Any additions, deletions, comments or questions? See, no hands, no voices. If I acceptable the amounts, okay, roll call please. Mr. Thorne?
Hi.
Mr. Prano?
Hi.
Mr. Diatley?
Hi.
Mr. Harney?
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman?
Hi.
Mr. Nimmick?
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. Motion so passed.
The only other item I have is I still have not received a bill from Western B for our sewer service. So at this point, I still have not closed out August. So we have called, we have emailed, and all we have gotten are crickets. So we don't know what's going on at this point. So
save our money.
So, next meeting, I will give you a preliminary August report if I don't hear anything else from them. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Eugene. Well, okay, next item is comments from the public. Do you have one sign-in listener? Okay, Kelly Thomas.
Hi, I live on Chelcote Drive. I've lived here for thirty-three years and I've never, I just been here because I'm concerned about speeding that is going on down Winmore and Locust. I've walked yesterday with many of my neighbors every day and have almost been hit several times. By the time I get my phone out, or, you know, I started carrying a pen and a piece of paper, well, you know, the glasses, I can't give the license plate. But it's very concerning to me and I've noticed since the stop signs are taken out at Locust, that that's where people are cutting. It's a cut-through. I will say that the police are doing a great job, you know, to you guys on Locust there, but Winmore has gotten progressively worse and, and I've never seen anything like it in my thirty-three years. And it is very concerning to me because, you know, just the other day, someone, one of the folks was walking with his wife and his dog on Winmore and I moved over just a tad bit came to almost a complete stop and somebody came barreling towards Locust on Winmore and almost hit me and went around into the lawn of the house, just to get around me. And all I was doing was being courteous to the people that were walking. And there's, there's no reason for it. And I know it happens early in the morning, it, you know, like around school time, I've seen them go around a lot. I mean, it's just unbelievable and I've never seen anything like it. So it's, that's why I'm here, because I'm very concerned about this because I just, and I, you know, it could be people cutting through, it could be because I notice they come up Locust when I'm walking, they whip down, you know, willow there. Same thing, they come up willow, they whip down Locust, they're coming up Winmore, you know, and back down if they're late dropping, I get it. But come on, it's ridiculous. And, you know, if I yell something, my neighbor said, don't, they're gonna shoot you, they're gonna shot in the heart. But instead, they'll sit there and roll their window down and start yelling at me like, you know, and all I'm saying is, please slow down. And they start with the four-letter words. Like, I don't have a right to walk on the street. And it's not like I'm walking in the middle of the street, I'm walking on the side. And we do, if there's three of us walking, we move single file and we will step over in the grass, but they are flying, and I mean flying down that street. So I don't know what what the, you know, what the answers, but it's just not good. So that, I just
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Joanne.
Alde.
Alde?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for letting me speak and thank you, Kelly. I totally agree with you. I've lived here since nineteen eighty and I've seen the changes in the village, some good, mostly good. I think we all agree, the reason we live here is because it's such a unique place. Yes, there are no sidewalks, yes. We're walking on the road, we understand that. There are no streetlights, we understand that. This is what we wanted, that's why we live here. So I agree with her, that traffic has greatly increased. I had a very unhappy, frightening experience. I was driving up Locust, getting ready to make a left-hand turn onto Winmore. A car came behind me, tailgated me for a bit, and then as I was going up the steepest part of Locust, he swung around me into incoming traffic on the top of the hill. And I thought, oh my God. He whipped around me, made his right turn, I was right behind him, and he went into his driveway. So he was a resident.
Did you get the address?
Pardon? No, I didn't. Well, I got the address, but, and I thought of stopping him and I thought, like, Kelly, not a wise idea. I will say this, I've always had a good relationship with the police department. I remember when I first moved here, there was a car that, police car used to sit off of Sleepy Hollow Road, tucked around the corner. And my people respected that. And they stuck to the speed limit, and me too. And I do watch it because I don't want to hit anyone walking, and I certainly don't want to hit a deer. So I think we are all concerned for this reason. There is an increase in traffic, I have no explanation for this. But that one incident just got a big back out of me. I don't know what you're thinking of, buddy. So thank you.
Mary, Ms. Kedso, how are you?
Fine, and John says hello.
Give him high regards, would you please?
He would like to be here, but I'm here instead. I'm, I'm echoing what's happening here. And again, I'm also thank the police department for spending more time on Locust. And we really appreciate that. I think in addition to the number of drivers that are driving fast through the village, since the stop signs are out certainly on Locust, and, and perhaps since COVID, more people are home during the day, they're traveling more than they used to. But the other thing that is happening is there are far more people walking. Since we've been here since ninety-two, we see- Since we've been here since ninety-two, um, we see, we see people walking their dogs, people walking with their families, much more. And uh, and we even have a couple that are in motorized wheelchairs. And they're, they're coming along and and the traffic is, is not respecting the people that are also on the road. And I think we have to take a look and see, not only we look and say, okay, we've got stop signs. Where they ought to be according to guidelines and the law, but we have to take another look and say, what do we need to do? To protect the people that are using our streets. Um, as citizens and parents and and unfortunately, we've all gotten older since we lived in in ninety-two. You haven't that good talk, but uh, we really appreciate your addressing these matters for us. And I know Locust is one problem that, but I heard that Winmore is another. I also want to make a note. I met her this afternoon, but new people who moved in with small children. And on Locust and it, and it's a little terrifying with traffic that's probably long so speedily. And I don't think it's necessary, it should not be necessary that people put out signs asking drivers to slow down. I, I think that should be, the reputation of Sleepy Hollow was always, don't go twenty-six in Sleepy Hollow. You're gonna get ticketed. And so. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Well said.
Uh, John Lucas.
Thank you, thank you. Having you speaking and allowing me to speak our, our views. Been here twenty-eight years, live on Joe Peak. My wife and I walk our two dogs, two, sometimes three times a day. And we almost get hit two or three times a day. It has gotten ridiculous. The traffic coming up. From Locust up the hill towards the school, there's a rise there. They don't see you until you're almost at Joe Peak intersection. Can't tell you how many times we, we had to take our dogs and pull them into Ann Court. To avoid getting hit and the drivers don't even flinch. There's been times we've been walking the dogs and now faint to move into the street just to see what would happen, nothing. There's a Range Rover, I swear it has a gun sight under a hood. Because it's, I, every time that car comes up the hill, it's gotta be doing forty, forty-five. And we yelled at the driver and Kelly said, you get an off scene gesture there. When we moved here, we were told by our neighbors, tell everybody that's coming to visit you, beware. We loved it, we liked that attitude. We wanted everybody to be safe here. We raised three boys here and fortunately, never had an incident. Close calls, they'd come home, they'd be hovering a little bit. We almost got hit on our bikes. Because you got a ton of bike riders. My wife and I ride through the village. We, I'll put the bikes on a, back into my car and get out of the village to be safe. That's sad. It's a really sad commentary on what we've done here. One of the things when you come up Winmore almost every day, there's either a landscaper or one of the. Tree removal trucks and service trucks. These speeders rip around these, they don't know what's on the other side. Uh, red oats trucks that almost in the middle of the street. We were walking the dogs, car comes around, another car is coming up behind us, he come right in front of us. I mean, I could have. Handed him a cup of coffee through the window, he's that close. And because, you know, the trucks are there and you look, could he have pulled over another foot, maybe onto the shoulder? It'd be nice to enforce that, maybe impress when these guys are coming into the village. That, yes, we don't have sidewalks and we need to leave the roadways open. Uh, bicyclists, you know, when you try to pass one of those guys, you don't know what you're getting into and you're afraid to do it. Kelly's husband rides through, Bob's got some scary stories about it, he's got flashing lights and blinking lights all over his bike. The taking down of the stop sign on Locust, we're all surprised that that happened because. I don't care, I'll spend two minutes at a stop sign if it's gonna make things safe. I would like to have three stop signs on Winmore. Put them up there. I'm not in favor of speed bumps that are happening in a lot of villages. Because that puts the village in liability for damage on the vehicles. Put up the stop signs. On Sleepy Hollow Road, we have that speed indicator. Can that be moved to different parts of the village? Can we have it on Winmore? Doesn't it run solar or something? Slide it over to Winmore, at least let people know that they're in more than one way, uh, speeding. Years ago, the police used to take them into the empty, uh, police cars and park them on Ann Court. Just a little bit sit there, you know? People come on the hill, you don't know if it's, uh, occupied or not. And maybe have it occupied. You might see your ticket totals go through the ceiling because it's, it's a baseball, you know? It's ridiculous and it's, you know, it's, I have, uh, my grandkids with me, I won't let them go near Winmore. I won't walk them on Winmore, I won't, you know, they're riding their bikes. No, they stay in Joe Peak in front of the house and we love to have them take their bikes down to the school and go use the playgrounds. But get, put them in the car and take them over. So we need to do something as a village to make it safe for everybody. And I think there's some pretty, maybe the signs, maybe moving that speed indicator. Having uh, some of the police cars sit around, uh. Maybe, you know, what we, my wife and I've noticed is that a lot of the speeders have Sleepy Hollow stickers on them. Maybe we need to put something in the newsletter saying, we're gonna start cracking down. That people were here today and they're concerned and we're, this is gonna be a mandate. More, uh, you know, ticket at twenty-six, please do. Have all my support, you know? Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, that is all we have on the signup sheet for this evening. That's it for the public comments. Uh, I will let you folks know that we understand your concerns.
I got here a couple of minutes later, last of order.
Okay.
Really quick.
Sure.
Um, I'll send my name, but.
Now just give us your name.
Uh, Steve Martin.
Steve Martin.
I'm eight forty Winmore, we're brand new residents of Sleepy Hollow, so we love the village, we love the serenity of the, of the village. Uh, I think the police force is doing a great job, but from really sunrise to sunset, there's, there's speed down Winmore. Um, I see the signs on Locust, I like the signs, but this is a community doing that, right? They're putting up, today, there are little flags on the signs, trying to get more attention to the speeding. Uh, my wife wakes up just making coffee, the cars are just flying down, I mean. At that point, I don't know where the officers are, I, you know, I know they're, they're limited. But I do think as a board, you guys gotta figure out a new way to, to resolve the problem. Um, you know, we're gonna be lifelong residents here, this is our final destination, our kids will sell the house. But um, I really think that the residents here and that there's, I don't know if you can see them out there, there's probably fifteen more people out here. It's a very big issue, we really need to come to some resolution. And the cops are doing a great job, so thank you for that. Um, but thank you guys for the board, I thank all the residents for showing up today. It's really important that we all stick together, but um, it, it's just, it's gotta, it's gotta, it's gotta change, right? I've only been here like a month and a half and I noticed that these guys that have been here thirty years, it's gotta be just a huge change for them. Forty years, thank you. Um, so anyway, I won't take any more time. A new resident, I wanna. I wanna be here, I, I'm hoping, and I don't know this, but I'm hoping all of you guys are residents and you all feel the same thing, if you're not. I, you know, I don't know how the politics work, but I'm hoping that you're all residents and you all feel the same struggles that the residents out here are feeling. We need to do something and continue to do something, those speed bumps, the, the little divots in the road, I don't know what the answer is. I like the roving sign, those are portable. If we, if we don't have them, let's borrow one from the next village over. The police are portable and I, I do know, I'll tell you. I do notice a difference when the officers are on our street on Winmore. Um, I actually found the cut through to go out to thirty-one on Locust. I didn't know it was there, but it's a huge savings for me. I set my cruise control at twenty-five. I got a big truck, I'm. You know, I know it's intimidating when I'm coming down the road, but I got it set at twenty-five. I, I move over for the walkers, for the bike riders, for the kids, and there are a lot of kids running around the street that locust and win more there. So that's my two cents. I hope you take it to heart, I hope you guys continue doing the patrols, um, for my new resident. Thank you very much. And I think Jeff wants to talk. I think that's a different thing. Did, did, were your names up at that, right?
He's got an eight o'clock proposition. Okay, sir?
Yeah, I think you got, you all beat up in here since nineteen seventy-five.
The one time you had a stop sign at Willow and Locust. Since you changed the stop sign to Willow, she's like, no, I'm not just speaking, I'm just trying to buy. All hours, day and night, they think Locust is great, but. Access speed and loud numbers. Several people live on Locust, they posted signs, please slow down, to know where. Our tickets need to be given. For some speeding, warning signs need to be put up. Maybe speed bumps, just stop. We ask the village to take some sort of corrective action. Thanks. And then I'm selling out, I'm moving near his owner. You and my daughters. Listen, I have his own taxes up, my son will have his own friend. They're gonna build me like a casino, if you know what a casino is. Like a small place here. Without an old place we've done. So, which I, I live here since seventy-five. So you guys see a big document driveway, that's, I'm, if I get the paper pretty fast. And just picks up, pretty well got up, absolutely already done, firewood and everything, so. I've just placed up. But uh, we got time for a story. Uh, my wife died. I was having knee surgery. So I go to the hospital, I'm in a night gown, ready to have my surgery. The doctor called me, I've got a case there on my back, I can't do the surgery, so I canceled the operation. I said, well, if you can't do the operation, why don't you get Dr. Palmer to do it? I get home, they call me on the phone, they give me doctors' names and everything. So why should I be going through this? It's not my fault, I kept the operation. I hang up Tim, I look out the backyard, this is after my wife passed. I seen four or five red cartels in the backyard and one was the brightest red, I never seen a cartel. Who knew that was? So I called my daughter and the daughter's had a cartel, she said, damn, that's a sign. And those who were hanging up, my daughter, they're calling me, I'm in the hospital. We have Dr. Palmer, he gonna do your knee surgery next Wednesday at noon. That day was my wife's birthday. It was about a two-hour operation, I got home, I've been by myself, in the sense. No pain, no criticism. It's been rough either for me.
Keep up with the PT, sir. Help you. Okay, thank you, uh. That's for public comments, it brings us to the eight o'clock presentation. Jeff, uh, Heisel? Sir?
Thank you, uh. That's, uh, it's been a big, uh, issue with ours is speeding in the, uh. In the village. Me too, I'm also, uh, my father passed away this week. And uh, I'm a fear, I have a fear of public speaking. So that's how important this, uh, meeting is to me. So just wanna say Sleepy Hollow has been a, known as a community with a speed limit strictly enforced. Non-residents would choose to avoid Sleepy Hollow for that reason. Recently, there has been an increase in drivers who are speeding and cutting through our village. Many of our narrow, curved, obstructive visibility and do not always allow the driver's reaction time. Needed to avoid accidents. Drivers, many who are residents aggressively tailgate those of us who follow the posted speed limit. And feel entitled to pass us on narrow streets. They often do not give pedestrians the legal requirement of three feet of space. A frustration we all share. Drivers who routinely ignore the speed limit while driving. To the school to drop off or pick up your children, putting others' lives in danger. Statistics, statistics tell us that if a pedestrian is hit by a vehicle. Moving twenty miles an hour, nine out of ten people will survive. At thirty miles an hour, five people out of ten will survive. And if struck at forty miles an hour, one out of ten will survive. How soon will it be before someone is injured or killed by speeding drivers? We commend Chief Parma and the entire Sleepy Hollow Police Department for increased presence and efforts to tip the speeders. But we feel this is not enough. We understand that police officers cannot be everywhere all the time. And we are asking the village of Sleepy Hollow to engage and take action. Speed camera enforcement is one of the most effective. Evidence-based and low-cost measures to reduce speeding, save lives and prevent injuries. These safety-related issues are evident across the village and need to be addressed. Recently, there has been additional attention on Locust. And that is appreciated, not only by the residents that are hit on Locust, but also on the adjacent streets. But across the village, as we begin to see the results of increased police presence and law enforcement. Looking at Locust and what is lacking there. More speed limit signs need to be posted, especially approaching seventy-two. Being crosswalks and trailhead signage will add to driver awareness of the human presence there. Homeowners on Locust and across the village, when the safety hazards are unbearable, are also concerned. About their home values falling due to noise and traffic. And are tired of living on what now feels like a highway instead of a serene, safer street. That's what Sleepy Hollow was once known for. Yet to that, the amount of trash tossed by drivers onto the road and, and on our property is horrible. This is noted on Hillcrest, Locust, Joy, Winmore and other internal streets. Go-through traffic signs might help reduce the amount of drivers hoping to cut through and avoid the light at Route seventy-two and thirty-one. The volume of traffic and threat from speeding, speeding drivers is in direct contrast to the tranquility that attracted so many of us. To Sleepy Hollow in the first place. But now so many families in the community are afraid to walk down their own streets. People are nervous to retrieve their mail, they'll take their dogs for a walk. The quality of life in Sleepy Hollow is less than what it should be due to these traffic issues. You want to feel safe, to enjoy a jag, a bike ride without fear of being struck by a car. Our children deserve to play in their own front yards without the dangers of drivers ignoring the speed limit. Our safety and the safety of our children is at risk on a daily basis and this is unacceptable. We're asking the village to step up and take action to make our roads safe by enforcing the posted speed limit. And by whatever other means necessary. You know, you all live in Sleepy Hollow as well and that these concerns affect your quality of life here too. Thank you for taking this matter so seriously and for your time. We all want the same thing, feeling safe in your home and your neighborhood. Should not be a question. Can I see a show of hands to support this issue? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sean, we're having a chat. Audio problem?
Yeah, I think a couple people on Zoom need to mute.
Oh, okay, I muted, alright, thank you.
Question, I just asked Chief Parma.
Sir.
I just wondered if.
I know you like to ask the questions, sir, we're finished with public comments and we're returning to the regular agenda. Okay? I will note that the concern of the residents expressed tonight is shared by everybody on this board. There is really little vote that we as board members tonight can do. The best thing that can be done is for you to contact Trustee DiAtlee and Chief Parma. And arrange to have a sit-down with the two of them and me. And we can discuss this situation through and through. Tonight, though, is for comments only. We're not getting into a question and answer, we're not getting into debate, we're not gonna talk about theories or possible cures of the problem. That's not on the agenda for us to resolve. And we might as well take up world hunger, if we were gonna go to that thing. We'd be here all night. And to be honest. All of us on this board love a good story, but we're not paid by the elements. We all volunteer our time, and we would, you know, like to keep these meetings to the business of the village. This concern with speeding, as I said, is something that we are concerned about, though. But we have a chief of police and we have a police department in place to take care of it. Please address those concerns to Chief Parma. His layers on to the board is Trustee DiAtlee. Trustee DiAtlee and Chief Parma will bring any comments or any concerns they have to this body. For discussion and conclusions, if they so need our support. They know their budget, they know what they can and cannot do. They do not need the board for that. But as I said, if you as residents would like to have a conversation with Chief Parma, I'm sure he'd more than willing to make time to sit down with you. And have a conversation along with Mr. DiAtlee and myself, where available, just give us a call. There's no need for you to have to take time out of Monday Night Football to come down here and let us know that, you know, you're concerned. We get it, we've got the emails, we've got the messages, we've been on it, we've been watching it. And a lot of the things that you've talked about this evening, we have heard, and I mean, I personally have heard them over the last twenty-two years, sitting in this room. So, you know, it, it's an ongoing issue. And we're gonna do what we can with the resources that we have to do. Just remember, Sleepy Hollow has a stick and a spoon. Stick's broken and spoon's bent. Okay, we are very limited on our resources. So. Be careful and be gentle with us, and, you know, we will do what we can with that broken stick and that bent spoon. Okay? If that's said, I'm gonna return to the agenda. Uh, trustee reports, roads and parks, Mr. Harney?
Um, I will be meeting shortly with the Dundee Park District about the future of San Antonio Park. And this is regarding playground equipment and maintenance, sharing agreements. Uh, I'll keep you updated on that. Any recommendations from, uh, board members or past experience from other board members, uh, would be appreciated within the next. Week and a half prior to this meeting. Um, so at the next meeting or two, I will have something to report on that. Um, I'll put Kyle up a little bit, maybe he could update us on the patching, if he would do so. Within the village?
Sure, uh, Saman Stadium came in. Uh, last week and I finished all the patching that I gave the president of the board the estimates to do. So as far as the public works, uh, general fund, road maintenance, patching process for contractors to do, they, that is complete for the year. And, uh, we'll still be doing popple with the fairer here in there, whatever the interact.
I have nothing further, Mr. Booz.
I, what's that? Was that it?
Uh, if Kyle was finished, I have nothing further.
Oh, okay, I believe Kyle was done, thank you, Ed.
Okay.
Uh, finance, Mr. Hoffman?
Nothing at this time till after the audit?
After the audit, okay. Uh, water and sewer, Mr. Nemec, thank you, George.
Mark, you just wanna take over the discussion here, or you want me to start it?
Why don't you give it a, a, a background and then we'll see where it leads?
Okay, so for the board members that may or may not know about the sewer system. Um, it was installed with a grant thirty-five years ago or so. Um, the village, the, the sewer line is pressurized, so it's a unique system. Um, the sewer system, they, some of the home lots are empty, uh, when they installed. The system, they put in bells and a line up to the lot, the homes that were existing, they basically put in a sewer tank. Where the septic field would have been. They also have a panel that goes with it that controls the pump and the floats and the whole thing that they mounted. Onto the house, um, wherever they could, it's fed by two-twenty from the resident's house. The village owns the, the panel that controls everything, the tank, everything that's in the tank. The two-twenty line from the panel to the tanks. Um, so Kyle, over the years, and probably before that, and he may as well speak to us, has had issues with improvements being made. To the homeowner's property, which causes issues with him having access to any of those. Village-owned pieces of property, as, you know, from a deck being built over a tank to people putting driveways over the sewer valves. Um, we've also had issues with water valves with driveways being put over it, sewer, um, manhole covers. Um, I believe we've also had issues, uh, with public improvements from the water main, as far as people putting improvements such as. Um, around their driveways or, uh, other improvements that. Causes some expense to restore or take out. So, the question was asked to Mark, and Kyle asked me about what is our responsibilities as far as restoration for any of that? And there was a letter that he put in the package. So I guess the question tonight is, do we, are we happy with what we have, or do we wanna shore up that? Uh, ordinance a little bit more to make it very clear as to what financial responsibilities we have, and just let you know, Kyle can speak more to us, but we just spent. Fifty hundred dollars paving a driveway that they paved over the sewer valve, and Kyle, you've had other issues beyond this, right?
Uh, yeah, many, it's, it's sewer B-box valves and water B-box valves, um. Very important, for some reason, when they put the white driveways in, they did not go around the B-boxes in the middle of. Uh, there was a bunch of cell phones too, for, for the water B-boxes that are in the driveway. So, the issue that we had is we used to have homeowners be responsible for the B-box, we've switched that because it's more of a pain for. Us, and in doing so, we kinda opened up a can of worms of driveways and B-boxes. Uh, you have to cut the driveway to replace the B-box, so you get down to the valve, it's about four feet down. So, we are.
And a lot of these B-boxes obviously existed before the driveways or the home was built, and they chose to, even though it was a known location, to put the improvements over it. So, and I believe Kyle is correctly wrong, we've also had issues with people make, you know, putting around their. Um, driveway culverts making improvements that had to be removed, we. Put the water, it had a water main leak, and then you had to. They wanted us to restore that to the condition it was in?
Yes, and, um, there, there's only, there's, that's like, uh, you know, once every now and then, but I see more and more of is sewer tank issues. Where the homeowner put a deck over the tank. Um, some put a hatch in it, but it doesn't really help if we have to dig out the tank. And I think the other issue I'm having too with some of it. Is that there had been building permits pulled and filed. And approved, and then the, the tank is not accessible for us to get to.
So. So how do we wish for two, do we, do we wish to, this, there's no minor expense of what we've had to deal with this, so. Um. I guess, go ahead, Mark, do we wanna, look at what our options are from here, if you just wanna verbalize it real quick?
Right, so I looked at the village code and you'll see words, uh, about the owner being responsible for certain things. And, uh, other clauses that say that, uh, these, some of the public, uh, portions of the system. Are to be readily or easily accessible. Uh, I would recommend that you, uh. Amend the code to specify that the homeowner is going to be responsible for restoration. Of items that they elect. Uh, to, uh, add to their property that obstruct the access to these, uh, public items, uh, these items that the village has a responsibility to maintain or replace. So that, uh, it's clear, uh, what the obligations are.
So, that's the way I'd like to proceed unless, you know. Anybody objects, we can direct Mark to write that ordinance up for the next meeting.
So, Mr. Nemec, when he started this discussion with me, uh, was thinking of a policy, at least a written policy. To be adopted by the board, uh. That, that's a thought, uh, uh, it, it may be an issue when it comes to enforcing. Uh, that policy in terms of the notice to the, to the property owners, whereas if it's in the village code, it's clearly noticed to everyone.
And, and I'd also say that we have, uh, history of setting policy and with every best intention, then having it disappear into a file cabinet someplace. So does anybody have objection to, to proceeding that way?
That's the background part of this, I guess, looking for some consensus on the board as to how to, how to move forward or, or whether to move forward on this.
Hey, Mark, could I ask you a question? Wait, I went through that earlier, and I read all that in detail. And I like the part about other municipalities, so with what we write, will it be as strict, or it's not, it's, it's even more strict or less strict than the reference you made with other municipalities?
Well, I would say it'll be as strict.
Okay.
You know, it, the, the idea is to clarify that. It's, it is not the village's responsibility to replace or restore private improvements that obstruct its access. To parts of its sewer or water system.
And it's part of that, I mean, you know, I, I agree completely, I mean, with, the village should not be spending a dime of its own money. To make improvements on anybody's property if it's beyond, I mean, where I've come from before, it, it was set in very detail, you were told this new development we had built in before. I guess the, the, the village or whatever the borough owned, you know. Twenty feet on each side, I mean, from the center of the street, so basically it was anything be, beyond the outer edge of the pavement. You know, from there forward to your house, you were responsible, so if anything went wrong, you had to break up the pavement, whatever, that was your responsibility. I mean, you knew that, and if that's the case, could we put the, I know you put the new codes in the village newsletter. But could we do that a couple of times, just to let people know that going forward, you're not even gonna be grandfathered in, that, uh. You know, if you've encroached on what is the village's, you know, responsibility or property, then. If something happens and they've gotta dig it up, or something's gotta be replaced, then it's your responsibility to put it back to the way it was. I don't think, I mean, I, I know I have no problem at all with that. I mean, the village is running a tight enough ship as it is, let alone, uh, paying for people's improvements, you know, for something they did.
I have a question on, uh, the location of some of these things. So, if, if a resident is looking to add a deck, as an example, or expand the driveway. Do we know? On all of the properties where some of these. Things are located currently?
Uh, yes, the, the sewer tank, you can't miss it.
Is that the one that somebody I see has the green tap on it?
Uh, the newer, the newer versions have a gray, rounded, uh, the older ones, you probably not be able to see it from the street, it's just a flat, some are green, some are black, uh, and some are aluminum. Um, so you can't really miss that. The only thing that the homeowner might not know is where the electric from the tank to the panel box runs, on, because it's underground. Um, but.
The panel box is in their house, or.
It's on the outside, yeah, it's on the outside, it's usually, it's usually attached to the house somewhere. And there's no rhyme or reason of where the tank and panel box are located, some are right by each other, and some are completely around the other side of the house, because I, I'm assuming back in. Eighty-two or eighty-three, whenever it was, they just, it's a two-hundred-and-thirty volt system, so they hooked up wherever the AC. Line was, it was easier to tap into it that way. But the sewer tank, you can't miss.
And with B-boxes, uh, I know you were at my property, we found it, you know, by the tree.
Yeah.
You know, and we had no idea.
Right.
The one that was exposed, I thought was mine, happened to be my neighbor's. So with B-boxes, if, would, would we have a record? Would you have a record in your files as to the locate addresses of where your B-boxes are?
I don't have any records, I mean, I have some of where they are, I mean. Throughout time, we've written down where they are located in the yard. Um, the ones that are in the yard are not an, an issue at all, it's, it's the dr, for some reason, when. The builder came in and decided that they're gonna put the driveway over the B-box, I mean, not over, but right around it, so there, you'll see in the middle of the driveway, there will be a B-box. Um.
And if, and if, and if, and if we have to repair that for the water.
Cut out, right.
So, I, I, I'm, I'm asking the question, just said, so there is a way for residents to find out this information?
Yes, yeah.
Prior to them doing some improvement?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I agree that it should not be the village's responsibility to. Pay for, uh, replacing a pulver that happened to be over the B-box or water main or something. Uh, because it was done without the right information that the resident should be responsible for. The other, last question I have is, I know that, to, to what George mentioned. Uh, if, if water's coming, you know, if the water mains are going down streets, from the main to the house. Uh, you know, with that water line is coming in. It, uh, until it gets to the physical building of the house. Is that distance village responsibility?
Current policy is from where the, the B-box is to the water main.
Is village, B-box.
The house's resident, yeah.
So.
B-box is in village property.
Right.
Yeah.
Should be.
Cut off.
Should be, should be, yes.
So again, it, it, it's important that then the resident knows, and maybe in a. Note in, in the newsletter or the website, uh, where, you know, as a reminder, you know, your, your B-box, your brown pipe, that's your water. From there to your house, anything that happens in that space is responsible to the homeowner. In front of that, it's responsibility of the village. Uh, and, and we, you know, try to reiterate that periodically, uh, during construction season or any time. So, yeah, I don't believe the village should be responsible for. Hey, thanks for those repairs because of what they had to, what we had to do to repair it.
So, Mr. President, would you like a motion or just consensus?
I'd like a motion.
I move that we, oh boy. Direct, Mark, you want to tell me what the motion should be?
Well, if I get a, if you, if you direct the village attorney to, uh, review the water and sewer regulations and clarify the responsibility of the homeowner. For, uh, restoration of private improvements that obstruct or interfere with the public system.
So moved.
Have that, got that, Mr. Mills?
He got it on tape.
It's a good thing there's a tape.
The best motion I've ever made, thank you.
Second, Harney. Okay, Mo by Nemec, seconded by Harney to instruct the village attorney to revise the ordinances regarding the homeowner's responsibilities. Regarding to water and sewer services to their property. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Well, with a lot of speed, we will move forward. Okay, roll call please, Mr. Brando.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Nemec.
Aye.
Six firmly votes, no negative votes in motion, so passes, we will look forward to your memo, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else, Mr. Nemec?
No, that's all I have, thank you for everybody's time.
Uh, quick question though for you, Joe.
Yeah.
Are you on your front porch or are you at water tower?
I thought, I just tried to break it up a little bit, I, you know?
Okay.
You like that?
The question is, when did they move the water tower to a whole?
It's covering up a B-box.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think it is actually.
Could be, we don't know. All right. Uh, next is police and public safety.
Uh, yeah. Thank you. Just want to thank the residents for coming out tonight and sharing the concerns with us about the speeding in the village. Um, it's not, as President Pickett said earlier, this is, we take it very seriously because this is not only an issue for the west side of town or the east side of town. We find it on the west side off of Troy, uh, with cut through traffic and everything. Chief and I have had numerous conversations and continue to have conversations on finding the best way to curb this and to slow things down. Um, so just want to let the residents know, we do take it seriously. We are looking at different options of what can be done. Um, and we will, you know, if they reach out, certainly I'm available anytime they can reach out to me as well. Um, that's all I have. Chief, anything to add?
Um, no, no, it's been, it's been pretty well summarized and, uh, I've got some ideas and, and I'll reach out to the president of the process over here tonight. So I'm believing this is done so.
Chief, just real quick, just a reference, we were taking, we've got my grand, we've had the, the grandkids for the last several days, taking the one to daycare this morning. Seven, now, I'm usually not going by the apartments at seven forty-five in the morning anymore. I've retired, but, uh, we, we could stop with a bus there today and it must be a bus at seven forty-five or seven fifty. Behind us, this crack child in a, it was a white Toyota, and I wish I'd gotten his license, came out from, in front of us. There were three cars in front of him and the bus was there and the bus is parked right up from that island there on Locust, you know, where Locust is. This guy, young kid, whizzes by the three cars, the bus has the stop signs going and has the lights flashing. My wife just looking at this figure, what the heck? And the guy just takes off and passes the bus. And I mean, there were some people there at the stop that I yelled a couple, because there were kids there. And he just took off, right, right? I mean, totally, uh, uh, ignored the bus. I mean, he must, now, when the bus, bus was just about done loading, unloaded, we head down and we're going through the mall, you know, out to Huntley Road. And I see the guy at the stop sign at Huntley and Seventy-two. The light was full red. Right out, right through the light. So he passed a, a school bus and he, and he went right through the red light. And I'll tell you, and, and I recognized cars. I mean, it was my background for my whole life. So if I see the car again, I'll recognize it and I'll definitely get, you know, all the information on it. But I was absolutely shocked when, and I didn't want to say anything tonight, but I mean, I could not believe that happened. And my wife was just saying, this is absolutely nuts. I mean, he just blew by that school bus like it was standing still.
Uh, just one quick comment about people's driving habits in general, um, since COVID.
COVID, yeah.
Um, if either people have forgotten how to drive or they just don't care, uh, because people are much more aggressive when they're driving. You're on the highway, you're, you're going seventy-five miles an hour, they're going to run you off the road. That's just the way it is today. Um, so, yeah, I agree with, with, with the residents are saying, I agree with what you're saying, that people are much more aggressive than, um, we're working on it and we're going to continue working on it. And our, our issue is that we don't want to, um, we find that when we do these things in the subdivisions, we end up coming across most of our residents, which obviously puts us then, uh, in an uncomfortable situation of having to have an unpleasant conversation or interaction with one of our own residents, which we try not to do, but we may not have a choice.
I hate to say it, it is what it is. It's too bad.
Yep, I agree.
I got a question. Do some of these school buses have cameras on them?
They have cameras inside. Some school districts have them on the outside as well. Um, most of the school districts, if somebody passes, the school bus driver is supposed to write down the plate and then call it in. Uh, since I've been here, we've never gotten a call from, from the district three hundred.
Yeah, the, the burden's really on the driver, I think, to, uh, re, make a report.
Right.
And I don't, I don't see many of those in court. Doesn't happen very often.
And the problem is we, we, they not only have to have the car, but then we have to ask the bus driver, could you identify the driver? Which?
Right.
Additional problems.
Yeah, it's always hard for them to do that.
Okay. I just thought I heard some of them had cameras and they could get the license plate numbers of the cars and go from there. But you have to also identify the driver.
Yeah, that's a big stop. I mean, it's probably fifteen, twenty kids get on the bus right there.
Yeah. I think Ed had a question.
No, I just wanted to comment, I think it was just alluded to, but until we can, I mean, what can the police do if we can't furnish them with license plate numbers or a video of it or whatever, other than vent frustration? But their hands are tied with what they can do if we can't give them more proof other than incidents. So.
All right, all traffic tickets are gen, almost every traffic ticket is written from the officer's own observation, not from citizen observations.
Exactly.
So that, that's a problem. Police cannot be everywhere at every moment. So it's, it's a problem.
And I may just add really quickly, Steve, you, you said it very subtly there, but it goes back to what the trustee Hoffman said the other day, that, you know, we run this village very, with shoestring, I guess, is the best way of saying that. And this has been coming on for, since Steve and I have been on the board. And there's been talk of speed, speed tables, which is a smaller speed bump, but with discussion went, how much are they? Ten thousand dollars? We can't afford that. The village engineer recommended that we stripe Locust to put Chevrons in and put some signage up on the bike path and otherwise. And it's like, oh, we, you know, we're barely able to fix the courts that have potholes. So that goes by. So just another example of, you know, if we want nice things, we may have to look at having another tax rest, rent them and paint for them. So that's my thought. But it's, what'd you say, Steve?
So it's going to cost money to unbend that spoon.
Right. That, that's it. I mean, this, you know?
Okay. Uh, anything else, Mr. DeAtley?
No, that is it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Uh, public buildings and environment, Mr. Thornd?
Uh, uh, no report.
Mark? Buildings and zoning, Mr. Brano?
Uh, Ms. Denver called me today just to let me know that, uh, two addresses on Locust that are part of the apartment complex were pouring new cement patios without permits. And, uh, she cited both those residents and as she's leaving, the workers poured two others, right in her visible view. So she's on it, um, and, uh, she does an excellent job because a lot of stuff just happens kind of by osmosis. Um, but, uh, you know, maybe in, in, uh, in the spring, probably I might recommend we put another note in the newsletter about permits and codes and so forth. But that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome.
Anthony, no, I'm sorry, you're Tony, he's Anthony. I'll get this straight. Okay. Uh, old business, any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board? Anything for the good of the order?
I move adjourned.
Second.
Moved by DeAtley, seconded by Brano to adjourn. Roll call please. Mr. Brano?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Thornd?
Aye.
Mr. DeAtley?
Aye.
Mr. Harney?
Aye.
Mr. Nemec?
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. We are adjourned. We will see you folks on, uh, the eighteenth of October.
Good night, Joe.
Night, everyone.
Bring me some Garrett's popcorn from downtown, will you? I think they have a spot.
I got, I gotta, I gotta find a less appealing spot next time, huh?